We are live.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the June 12th, 2024 Special Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Angela Batazzo Chair and tonight's Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting is brought to you by Zoom. Welcome everyone and thanks for joining. Commissioners, if you could please have your microphones turned on for the roll call and Deputy City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you Chair. Chair Batazzo.
Here.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Regan.
Here.
And Commissioner Cuse.
Here.
And let the record show that Commissioner Victor Rashis requested an excused absence.
Thank you. Our first item of business is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern. Is there anyone who's signed up for appearances that wishes to address the commission?
Madam Chair, as of 4:00 PM this afternoon, I did not have a request to speak.
Good, thank you. Since there are no appearances, we're going to move to special business. The first item of special business is to review and consider approving the minutes of the May 29th and June 5th special meetings. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I have moved by Vice Chair Murphy. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Regan. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Deputy City Clerk, can you please call a roll on the vote?
Thank you Chair. Chair Batazzo.
Aye.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuse.
Aye.
And Commissioner Regan.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that vote, we approve the minutes. And move forward. The first item, whoops, that's the first item, the second item. Today is the Special Business Agenda Bill 2416, the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review Deliberations. And with that, I'd like to welcome Senior Planner Adam Zach to give us a quick briefing.
Thank you. We've got a quick slide deck tonight. We'll get through it pretty quick and on to deliberations. Just a moment here. So hopefully you can all see my screen. So tonight, we're continuing your deliberations from May 29th and June 5th on the overall comprehensive plan periodic review. Our purpose tonight is to complete deliberations with a focus on the land use, housing and economic development elements. And ultimately tonight, we're hoping to wrap up the planning commission's recommendation to the city council regarding the total comprehensive plan update. So that would include the elements that we reviewed last week, transportation, capital facilities, utilities in the parks and open space elements. So all of the elements that we've been updating, we're hoping to get your recommendation on. This comprehensive plan update for those in the public that may be just joining us at this stage is required by the Growth Management Act. We're required to periodically review the comprehensive plan. At this point, it's every 10 years. And the purpose of that update is to update, is to extend the planning horizon for the plan. So that it plans for the next 20 years, 2024 to 2044. And with that, we update the growth projections. So the number of housing units that we are expecting in that 20-year period. And then also the amount of employment growth we're expecting in that 20-year period. And then during this update too, we're addressing those new GMA requirements. And that's particularly true for housing, one of the elements that we'll be looking at tonight. And those new regulations or new requirements rather were enacted by the legislature over the last few years. And then ultimately, we need to complete the comprehensive plan update, the periodic review by the end of this year. The deadline is December 31st. We've been at this for two years. Everybody on the commission has seen this slide and the next two slides a couple of times now. Summarizing kind of the work that we've been up to for the last two years. If you're, if members of the public watching this would like to get an in-depth review of these steps. We went through this in detail on May 29th. So I'll skip ahead. The important thing to keep in mind here is that we are here in the legislative process this year, wrapping up the planning commission's recommendation to the city council. This is not the end of the process. So following the planning commission's recommendation, the city council will then review the periodic review or review the update. And they still have the opportunity to make changes to the plan prior to adopting it. The city council will get their first initial briefing on your recommendation, the planning commission's recommendation. We're expecting that next month to get on the agenda there. At the same time that the council is reviewing the elements that are before you today, that you'll be making a recommendation for. We will also be preparing some code amendments to implement this updated plan. Most of which will be working with the Housing Work Group to develop those initial drafts of code amendments. And that'll be coming back to the Planning Commission probably in September of this year. For your review and the legislative review associated with those development code changes. And all of that needs to get through the city council and adopted before the end of the year. When again, there's that state mandated due date. So the bottom line is there's several steps remaining in this process, this update process. As a recap of where we, what we touched on last week. There were several motions made amending the transportation element and making some findings. And one of those motions was, one, one motion was tabled. And a tabled motion requires a majority vote from the planning commission to resume consideration of that motion. And just as a process note, there's another option to lay the motion on the table, which essentially requires a first and a second. And that would call an immediate vote on that motion. And that tabled motion was the language shown here about transportation element policy 4.9. The full text was provided in a planning commission bill. So as we get through the, as we get through the discussion tonight. Return, if you want to return to that motion, this is the process by which you can, by which you can do that. If, if the motion is, is tabled and never returned to, it would just be kind of left on the table. And that, that's okay too, if, if there's no discussion, that planning commission doesn't want to pick it up. But just as a note, I wanted to provide that, like how, how do we resolve that tabled motion? So tonight, we'll be looking at or we'll be focusing on the, the remaining three elements of the comprehensive plan. These three elements were held for this meeting to give you the most amount of time to review and consider any changes you might want to make to these drafts. Because these are the most, particularly housing and economic development are some of the most substantive changes. Made in the policies of the comprehensive plan. So we wanted to give you some, make sure that you had several weeks to review those review drafts. So we'll be looking at the land use element, which was primarily updated to reflect changes made elsewhere in the plan. So as we've been going through and making changes like to the housing element or updating the transportation element, there's been corresponding changes to the land use element. The housing element would be a repeal and replacement of the existing housing element with a new element addressing housing. And primarily, that new element was drafted to address those updated GMA requirements. These are new housing requirements that the legislature has enacted in the last two years. So we needed to kind of overhaul that element. And then the economic development element is a, is a new element entirely. There is not an existing economic development element in the plan. And this, this was a, this was directed by the city council in the scope of work to establish some policy direction for the city's future economic development efforts. So it outlines kind of the, the program for addressing economic development. It should help kind of coordinate those efforts moving forward. So those are the three elements that are before you today. There were, there were three staff recommended motions in Planning Commission Bill 2413. You've already addressed the first two of those staff recommended motions. And I just wanted to bring up this, this third motion tonight. Again, that's kind of the, the final motion that needs to be made to make your recommendation. For the, the entire comprehensive plan as amended to the city council. So we can go through and make those tonight, just on a process note, we can go through and consider any proposed amendments. By motion and amend those, make those amendments. And then the final act would be to recommend the, the total comprehensive plan as amended. The next steps for this, we're planning to conclude deliberations tonight. And then as I mentioned, we're tentatively planning on bringing the city council an initial briefing on July 16th. And then in September, we'll be coming back to the planning commission to begin reviewing the implementation ordinance. And those are those development code changes to make the updated policies a reality. So those are the, the kind of high level next steps. And that concludes my presentation tonight. I can answer any questions you might have or we can get into deliberations.
The commissioners have any questions? For Adam Zach. Okay, seeing none. Based on public comment, you know, I know the planning commissioners have proposed a handful of motions for changes to the draft comprehensive plan elements. And in addition, there's a few motions on the table to add to the findings in preparation for transmission to city council. I would like to begin our deliberations tonight by first addressing any motions that recommend changes to the comprehensive plan elements themselves. And then finalize the elements for referral to city council, then address findings. And then make the motion to refer the draft after we've moved through that process. Any objections or can we get a general thumbs up to that flow? Great, thank you. With that then, I think just to move to addressing commissioners proposals around making changes. I'd like to start with Vice Chair Murphy, if you don't mind. Chair Murphy, do you want to introduce your proposed amendment?
Yes, I would. In light of some of the public comments and upon further reflection, I thought that it would be wise to slightly revise policy or land use goal 27.6.4. And I don't know if Adam can put that on the screen as revised, that would be great.
Yeah.
And basically, the changes are designed to reflect two things. One, instead of requiring certain policies that these would be studied because this is really in its infancy to some extent as far as a policy is concerned. And it would also negate the concerns of requiring regulations to implement this with, with the comp plan. And the second component is to, instead of referencing duplexes, triplexes and specific housing types. To simply tie that to the state mandates, which does include those, but it does include others.
Chair Murphy, Vice Chair Murphy, it's going to take me a minute to get used to saying that instead. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just for clarity, do you mind if we just formalize the motion? And I believe you're making a motion to modify 27.6.4 to read. And if you could read that out, just so we can get that into the record and then ensue in discussion, that would be great. Like a moment, second, please.
Sure. I move that we revise land use goal 27.6.4 to state promote an energy efficient built environment by studying ways of reducing greenhouse gas emissions from the construction, heating and cooling of residential structures by encouraging smaller, single-family residential housing units. Moderate density housing, consistent with state mandates and the use of green building materials and techniques.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you. Okay. Chair Murphy, please continue. Vice Chair, whatever.
Whatever. Just Murphy's fine.
All right, Murphy, please continue.
Okay. As I was saying, there's two things there. One is to avoid the concerns expressed by public comments. That, that has originally drafted, it could require implementing regulations. And so changing it to studying, I thought made more sense. Also, this is, was something of a last minute change. And I think it makes more sense to have that, this addressed in a study format rather than making a specific requirement in the, in the, as a goal. And then the other issue was simply to tie the, tie the type of housing to the state mandates. Which does include the listed houses, housing types, but I think also address concerns expressed by the public comments. My goal specifically is to try to preserve this goal because I think is a very good one. And one that is, as I indicated, is forward thinking. And I think should be part of our, our, our city policy.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Commissioner Cuse.
Yeah, I think there's a disconnect in how we all might be viewing this. When I looked at this goal. I didn't think, and I continue to not think it requires study because my understanding was we're talking about required growth, growth that's assumed is going to happen. And we're talking about per capita expenditure of energy. So it's already been extremely well studied that apartments have lower per capita energy use per person than single-family homes. I think we know that. So I, I want to make sure, given our limited staff resources, that we are spending our resources very wisely. And not studying items that are, have already been well studied. The counterargument that might be, some folks might say, well, I reject the notion that we're going to grow. It's not a per capita thing. So I think that the concept of per capita is missing from the school entirely. So I'm concerned, and I'm also concerned about studying something that's already been studied.
Thank you. Commissioner Regan.
I, I agree with the, you know, there's, I think there's better ways to allocate limited city resources than to study this. I like the direction this is going. You know, but I mean, our three public comments, they all opened up with remove this goal. I appreciate being acknowledged. This was a late addition. And, you know. I'd, I'd be reluctant to support this, but I could support maybe putting a finding saying, hey. This may be a way to partially address public comment, but yeah, I'm kind of little reluctant to make a big change to the document this late in the game.
Thank you. Any final comments? Hearing none. As it relates to the motion on the table proposing to replace goal 27.6.4 to studying ways of reducing greenhouse gas emissions from the construction, heating and cooling of residential structures by encouraging smaller, single-family residential units. Moderate density housing, consistent with state mandates and the use of green materials and techniques. Deputy City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you Chair. Vice Chair Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuse.
Nay.
Chair Batazzo.
Nay.
And Commissioner Regan.
Nay.
Motion fails 3-1.
Thank you. Okay. The next motions to make changes to the document have been proposed by Commissioner Regan. Commissioner, I know you sent out a new round of motions. It looks like the majority of those proposing changes to the document live in the economic development element. Is that accurate?
Yes, five of the eight, correct.
Would you like to start introducing the motions one at a time?
Sure. Would it be possible for Senior Planner Adam Zach to quote them up? Um, let's see. And I'm happy to group, well, let, let, I think we can group the first at least two. So these are just, these are corrections of factual errors in the document. One and two are, I'll just put one and two together, really. We can read them. The rationale behind them is a more housing priced in the middle range, change that to more middle housing. That is the terminology we find in House Bill 1110 for, you know, I did some Ctrl F's on the document there. You know, and I think it's hard to get, you know, we can't, we can't articulate the price, right? The market determines that. So I think it's just a little clearer and it's a little, you know, it's using the actual language of that legislation as opposed to implying that this is priced in a middle range of something. So yeah, I guess that I'd like to put forth one and two together with that explanation. So, so moved to put one and two.
It's moved, motion to make the edits recommended in numbers one and two. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded and discussion. Hearing no discussion. There's a motion on the table to approve changes to the economic development element. To revise the header on page 12 of 21, line 16, from more housing priced in middle range to more middle housing. And also to revise the text on page 12, line 17. To read recent, from recent legislation will encourage the development of more housing priced in the middle range to recent state legislation mandates encouraging more middle housing. Deputy City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sorry, as a point of order before you do. Correct me if I'm wrong, Adam or Commissioner Raghead, but the, that included, the, the reading there included one motion that wasn't made, right?
Yes, number three is a step, a little step. You know, it's that plus something else. So yeah, it was just one and two as highlighted. Thank you for that catch.
Do we need to restate the motion for clarity?
I have it in the minutes, according to the document that's on your screen right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cuse.
Aye.
Commissioner Regan.
Aye.
Chair Batazzo.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Murphy.
Aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner Regan, do you want to continue?
Sure. So number three, same theme, but it also corrects recent legislation will encourage to recent state legislation mandates encouraging. It clarifies that that's state legislation. We don't know if it will incur, it will encourage development, but it mandates that we encourage it through our comp plans and code. So once again, I just tightening it up for members of the public who, who read it.
Just as a process, if we could state that as making a motion and state your motion and then we can get a second.
Understood.
And have discussion, that would be great.
Apologies, sorry. Okay.
Just want to make clear for Deb.
I move that we put motion number three as displayed before the commission.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Regan and seconded by Murphy. Discussion, please. Commissioner Cuse.
Yeah, I, I struggle with this language. I don't think I can support it. The reason being it, it almost strikes a defensive or I don't know if it's defensive or combative tone. The word mandates, it's, it's, I've, I've heard it used with a pejorative tone. And, and it almost suggests that that we're not doing it willingly, that we're not as a community welcoming middle housing. That we're only doing it because the state is forcing to us to. And so I think we should keep the language as is and not accept the revised language.
Thank you. Commissioner Regan. Before, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do a better job of process. Commissioner Murphy, do you have anything to add before I let Commissioner Regan speak further?
I, I do. I think Kate brings, Commissioner Cuse brings a good point. And I wonder if it would be better stated, something along the lines of it's required as opposed to the more combative term mandates. If, if, if the moving party would be interested in any kind of changes along those lines.
Are you making a friendly amendment to modify mandates to?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I'd like to hear from Commissioner Cuse if that mitigates her concern because I understand what she's saying.
Can I, can I hear the text?
I would just take the word mandates out and put requires or I wouldn't even just take it out. Just say, recent legislation encourages more middle housing.
Commissioner Regan, there's a proposal for a friendly amendment?
I would support requires. You know, if we do that, there's four mentions of that in House Bill 1110.
Yeah, I, I could work with requires. I just, I feel like the, the mandates term, it's, it strikes a tone that we might not want to strike as the city. I think that's a reasonable middle ground.
I'm, I'm okay with the friendly amendment to requires encouraging.
So I believe the revised motion would be to change page 12, line 17 to read, recent state legislation requires encouraging more middle housing. Is that accurate? Okay, great. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Deputy City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Just one moment while my fingers catch up. Language, okay. Vice Chair Murphy.
Aye.
Chair Batazzo.
Aye.
Commissioner Regan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Cuse.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next motion.
Um, I guess four and five are on the same tone, I think, at the same theme. So Um, I guess four and five are on the same tone, that I think are the same theme. So I'll, I'll move four and five together. I'd like to make the motion to put number four and five as shown on the screen in front of the commission.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Ragab, did you want to open discussion?
Sure. Yeah, our, I mean, our public comment, you know, raises some good points. Um, you know, they mentioned Beacon Hill, Central District, U District. They all have that density. They're all near transit, um, but there's still plenty of cars there. Having lived myself in Capitol Hill personally, I can, I can relate to those comments. Um, so I think will be less likely they own a car. There's, that's not, I, I think that's just incorrect. So I think we ought to remove that. Yeah. I won't, I won't take too much time.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Thank you. Um, I think there is some, uh, validity to the public comments and the motion. Um, but I also know from personal experience that there are people who either reduce number of cars they own or they, they choose or they may choose, um, to, uh, not own a car, not have a car in that period. So I, I think the issue is with the word will, and I would be inclined to alter, to leave that and simply change the will to may. Um, and wherever will occurs, insert may.
Uh, are you proposing a friend me- friendly amendment to the first of the two edits? Changing will be likely to own a car to maybe less likely to own a car?
Yes.
I want to note that I want to make sure we get to Commissioner Accuse before I circle back with Commissioner Ragab, and I also have a comment. Um, Commissioner Accuse?
Yes, and I think I'm speaking to both right now. So process wise, I'll just make my statement and you can tell me if I have to remake it for the motion itself. I, I like the motion as is. I am in wholesale agreement with um, Commissioner Rigab that there's not a basis in fact or data for this statement. Um, I've also lived on Capitol Hill and dense areas and not dense areas. And, uh, my experience is being a gardener. And people who are doing labor jobs often re- are required to have cars to get to and from their place of work. So um, my experience is that it's more like the, um, office workers or people that are hybrid workers, um, that might take public transportation more frequently than people, uh, in the labor, the laboring jobs. So I, I disagree with the statement and, and that's why I wouldn't also be really amenable to saying may. I like it as is.
Okay. Well, before I make a comment, Commissioner Ragab, uh, do you want to address the friendly amendment proposed? You can.
I'll, I'll stick with, I'll stick with will. Um, yeah, Commissioner Accuse raises a good point, and I think the may is, is kind of leaning in a dir- a s- a specific direction. So. Yeah, they're, they're, we're both, we're both scientists, right? So there's no, there's no fact, there's no data behind it. So I agree with Commissioner Accuse.
Well, this is fun. Um, my comment as a participating commissioner is, um, I, I'm not entirely sure that there's data around whether or not it does or doesn't occur. Um, as it relates to the first one where the proposal is to strike will be less likely to own a car. Uh, while I agree that we could strike it and that would be reasonable, the next one, the next statement, um, attracting residents in and near town center who are more likely to choose not to own a car. One thing I will tell you as someone who's participated in transportation and in particular trying to evolve our transportation networks to encourage transit use is that, um, your ability to create towns and areas and spaces where people can have a smaller, uh, what I like to call in wildlife biology terms, home range. Like where they may not necessarily require owning a car and then have other options, like when I lived downtown and didn't own a car and actually didn't own a car until a month ago, as it turns out, for the last five years. Uh, where you'd, where you live close enough that you can get away with not owning one. Um, and thereby adjust your economics where we might be trying to encourage that. And by encouraging it, we increase density. The second statement leans more towards likely to choose and creating situations where people are more able to and potentially more likely to, especially as the pressures on our economics increase. And so while I, I personally think if we took the amendments as is, um, I have a hard time taking both of them. I'd rather take them individually because I'm not super support. I'm fine with number one as recommended. I don't support number two because I think what we're trying to do is actually encourage fewer cars. Ultimately, that's what, ultimately everyone's trying to do that from the State Department on down. Um, so we've gone around the room one and a half times. Uh, Chair Murphy, before I recognize Commissioner Ragab for a third time and Accuse for a second time, I want to give you an opportunity to weigh in, given that it doesn't sound like your friendly amendment was accepted.
No, it wasn't. I tend to agree with you. I'm, I'm um, a little chagrined that we're addressing these together because they are different. Um, and I would tend to, to approach this differently and address them one at a time.
Commissioner Accuse?
Um, yeah, I want to acknowledge the statement that Chair Batazzo made because I, I'm wholly in agreement that we want to encourage transit and we want to encourage car-free, uh, lifestyles for those who can. What I'm struggling with is that, um, that the, it, it's written as both a choice and will be less likely to. And I'm, I'm personally not seeing the white collar, blue collar thing, I think exists in both, and that's why it's problematic for me. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't need a car when I lived on Capitol Hill. I got one when I had a child. You know, I, by, by friends who worked labor had cars and it wasn't a choice and it wasn't a likelihood, it was a must have. So I think there are, I think there are different ways, different potential policies to address, um, encouraging people who aren't required to drive for their jobs to take transit. I d- I just do not want to discriminate or make assumptions out about people who are required to have cars to do their jobs.
Uh, final thoughts from Commissioner Ragab?
I'd be amenable to breaking them up if someone proposes that as a friendly amendment.
I think you can propose it and we can get a second.
All right, so proposed to break four and five separate.
Second.
Uh, motion to separate discussion and voting has been moved and seconded. Do we need to take a vote, Deputy City Clerk on that, or can we?
It would be much easier for me if you would just, if, if Ragab and Accuse would agree to withdraw their original motion and then Ragab and Murphy can make a motion.
Sounds great.
So agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. A lot less typing on this and then catching up with you guys.
Right.
Okay.
I move to bring number four on alone.
Second.
There's a motion on the table to correct the text on page twelve of the economic development element. Lines eighteen through nineteen to strike will be less likely to own a car. Moved by Commissioner Ragab and seconded by Chair Murphy. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none. Uh, Deputy City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you. Vice Chair Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Chair Batazzo?
Aye.
And Commissioner Rigob?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes four zero. Uh, Commissioner Ragab, you want to make the next motion?
Yep. Um, I'd miss, wish to, uh, put, to move number five as shown above before the commission.
Been moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded the motion to remove the statement online. Page five, line fourteen of the economic development element that reads are more likely to choose not to own a car. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none.
Who?
Oh.
Sorry.
Chair Murphy.
Slow on the, on the clicker. Um, following up on, uh, Chair Batazzo's comments, I think the issue here is not choice has, and, and Commissioner Accuse's comments, the issue is not choice, but there are people that may have the ability to not own a car. And so I'm wondering if that could be reworded to reflect that rather than simply striking or not striking it.
Are you making, are you proposing a friendly amendment?
Well, I don't have language in mind. Um, I was more seeing if there was interest in trying to solve that riddle.
Let's see what Commissioner Accuse has to say.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I think some new verbiage could solve it. Um, because I do agree that there are people who are attracted to walkable, there, there's a walkability score on rental sites and home purchase sites for a reason. Some folks do not want to have a car in their lifestyle, and if they can, they would choose to live in town center because it's walkable. Um, so I don't think that's really a debate and I could see a way. I, I'd almost think you could change it to say instead of we'll choose not to own a car, you could, you could strike that language and say, we'll, we'll choose to move, um, to a more dense area because of the walkability. And, 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 and the lack of need of a car or something, you know, it's, it's, it's flipping on it on its head and it's saying that density is desirable for some people and using transit is desirable for some people. And it takes that choice word out of it. That's the word that's bothering me.
Commissioner Ragab, any follow-up thoughts?
Uh, it, it seems reasonable, but at the same time, I think we're diverging a little too far from the public comments. So, um, I would, yeah, I, but I would hope we can just vote on it as is. Uh, let's, let's, this is, it's not a goal, right? This is, this is the narrative.
Commissioners, Murphy or Accuse, anything further? Hearing none. Deputy City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Chair Batazzo?
Nay.
Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Nay.
And Commissioner Rigob?
Aye.
Motion fails, uh, split vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Ragab, your revisit um, is, at least in my notes, proposed as an edit to the transportation element?
May, may I be recognized to, well, okay, I guess I'll, I'll move this revisit number one, this, yeah. And see if we want to discuss it.
I think just to clarify with Adam Zach and the Deputy City Clerk, did we table this particular discussion or we never discussed this, right? Necessarily? Okay, I just want to make sure it's not a untabling.
Yeah. This is not the motion that was tabled last week.
Right, this was just a discussion as part of a broader discussion at the meeting last week. Okay, um, so then Commissioner Ragab, could you, could you please propose a formal motion that we can second and then move to discussion?
Yeah, I would like to move, uh, that we put number one under the heading revisit from last meeting, um, up for consideration with the commission.
Uh, I have a motion to revise the second to last paragraph of page twenty-one of the transportation element from the Mercer Island lot is typically fully occupied during weekdays. A number of users of this lot do not reside on the island. Two, according to the fourth quarter twenty seventeen park and ride utilization report prepared by King County, the Mercer Island lot is typically fully occupied during weekdays. A number of the users of this lot do not reside on the island. Photographs and public comment from mid twenty twenty-four assert the lot is often less than full. Do I have a second? Okay, I'll I'll second for discussion. That's only because Commissioner Murphy's hand was up and I thought he wanted to talk about it. So now I'm.
Well, what I wanted to talk about was the question that I thought we posed to staff was whether there is any more current data.
Adam Zach, do you have? Do you have a follow-up to that?
Um, I do not have the data in front of me. I believe, uh, Allison might have found something, um.
Yeah, I pulled up the
Related to this.
I pulled up the parking plan and in one of the exhibits, there was new data from twenty twenty-three. I don't remember the exact date of when they went out to the park and ride to look at it, but, um, it was in the last year. And they found at that visit, it was just a one-time visit in the middle of the day, I think around noon. Um, but there was approximately, I think it was around sixty-six percent utilization of the spaces of the park and ride.
Thank you. Commissioner Accuse?
Yeah, that resonates with my experience. Um, just visually, I would say that before that time, you know, early, early COVID days, it would probably have been closer to ten percent. And, um, I'll just repeat the comment I made last time for the, um, benefit of our discussion that, um, I don't think it's good to make policy on an item that's in flux or to change policy on an item that's in flux. And given, um, Boeing, Amazon, Google, a lot of agencies with very large, um, worker populations are requiring people to return to work at least a couple of days a week. I think we're going to see that number shift higher and higher. And there are people on the east side who could park at East Gate that choose to park on Mercer Island because it makes their commute shorter. And, and that's why the lot was always full when I tried to get there after dropping my kids off at daycare. So yeah, I just, I disagree with the amendment because it, it's something in flux. I think it's something that maybe we could address in the next comp plan update if we find that that lot continues to not have full utilization.
I, you know, I think, I acknowledge that one of the things that I appreciate Commissioner Rigab's attention to accuracy in the data, which is why we have the citation here of the 2017 park and ride utilization report, which is pre-pandemic. I, I, I think I recognize the need for accuracy. I'm also in agreement with Commissioner Cuse's statement about being careful about when we're making changes to policy pieces. Right now, they're pretty grossly in flux, like use of transit, park and rides, return to work. There's so much of that right now that's so in flux. There's a balance in how we state this. You know, I'd be more inclined to just recognize that pre-pandemic, the lot was typically full. And the number of users, a number of users don't reside on the lot, but I'm, I'm not sure that there's it's necessary to insert into the comp plan photographs and public comment assert assert what it does. I'm just, I'm not sure if that strengthens anything in one way or the other, so. End ramble. And are there further or final thoughts before we vote on this? Commissioner Rigab?
I'd, I'd be amenable to, you know, replacing that last sentence with the information researched by by Deputy Director Van Gorp. I think that's, you know, a, if a study by a state agency, you know, probably holds more weight than photos and public comment. But I figure we have, we have, we've got those three pieces of data. Let's, let's, let's give the source of that first one and okay, we can, we've got 2023 data, let's, let's, let's give it there. And then to the policy topic, I mean, this is, once again, this is kind of the, the, the beginning of it. It's not a specific policy goal. So, yeah.
Can you be, can you make a specific recommendation so that we can be clear about what the motion is? I know you pointed to what Deputy Director Van Gorp indicated. I'm just trying to pull up the comment matrix and
Yeah.
Zach response to see if I can find it, but if you could maybe be more specific about that, that would be helpful.
Bear with me, I'll, I'll try, yeah, I'll try to pull it up too.
Seven seconds, Commissioner Rigab.
I, I can't find anything with a Ctrl F twenty twenty-three.
All right, hold on, just for sake of fairness, let me just check real quickly on. Deputy Director Van Gorp, please feel free to jump in if you know where it lives.
I'm just finding it. Okay, so the data I was referencing is in the town center parking plan, which is on the city's website. I can pull it up on the screen here. If that's helpful. Find my share screen button for some reason. There it is. So this is the second to last page of the parking plan. There's some information on parking utilization research that the city had done. It was on June eighth of 2023 at noon. And you can see the park and ride there is shown in yellow. It says down here, there was utilization of sixty-seven percent at noon on that day. Don't know what RPD utilization means.
Residential parking district.
You're right, yep. So, yeah, I think sixty-seven percent is the data point for the parking ride from a year ago. And this can be referenced, it's the Town Center Parking Plan. This is a adopted plan of the city, so it's official.
What was the date on that item, 2023?
Yeah, this plan was adopted in November of 2023. That data point was from June eighth 2023.
What was the percentage, sixty-seven percentage? Okay. I think just for clarity, Commissioner Rigab, if you are encouraging a friendly amendment, it sounds like you would amend your revision to read. According to the fourth quarter 2017 park and ride utilization report prepared by King County, the Mercer Island lot is typically fully occupied during weekdays. A number of the users of this lot do not reside on the island. The following sentence is edited. The 2023 Town Center Parking Plan reports a weekday utilization rate of sixty-seven percent.
At twelve PM, I would be amenable to that friendly amendment.
Sixty-seven percent at twelve PM?
We've got the data.
Chair, can I ask if that last sentence be repeated?
Sure. The 2023 Town Center Parking Plan reports weekday utilization of sixty-seven percent at twelve PM. This one was moved by Rigab, seconded by me. Commissioner Cuse?
Yeah, I appreciate the addition of twelve PM, but I'm, I'm not quite sure that's how we want to word it because I think what we're trying to avoid is a false equivalency of a full-blown study versus a one-day data point, which is essentially anecdotal. There's no statistical significance of that data point. Just to nerd out a little here, saying at twelve PM though seems a little, that's very specific for a comp plan policy statement. So my preference would be to say, like, what do you call like a drop-in study or a pop-in, you know, it's not anecdotal, but it's a a snapshot, you know, one-day study.
A point in time.
Yeah, a point in time. Yes, thank you. Van Gorp for the win. Yeah, a point, rather than saying twelve PM, I'd rather say a point in time study on this date showed, and, and then I would also you know, complete that sentence saying suggesting post-pandemic parking use is in flux. Because I think that's the point we're trying to make, that parking use is in flux, and we may be trying to fit a square peg in a round hole here. But yeah, I think point in time might be more appropriate than a specific time.
Commissioner Rigab?
I, I, I don't, I think, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds. A suggestion to incorporate Commissioner Cuse's, one of, how about we just say a snap, a 2023 snapshot in time noted a sixty-seven percent utilization. We're not making any postulations based on that. We're just saying these are the facts. But it's a snapshot in time, not a full-blown study. And I want to move past this. I didn't think we would be hung up on this this long. Apologies.
I think just for clarity around the motion, I want to make sure I'm clear about the language you all are proposing. The final sentence, the 2023 Town Center Parking Plan reports a single point in time weekday utilization of sixty-seven percent. Both Commissioners, Rigab and Cuse, agree to that language. Vice Chair Murphy, do you want to say anything else about this before we take a vote?
No.
Groovy. Then the motion on the table for our vote is to revise page twenty-one of the transportation element. To read, according to the fourth quarter 2017 park and ride utilization report prepared by King County, the Mercer Island lot is typically fully occupied during weekdays. A number of the users of this lot do not reside on the island. The 2023 Town Center Parking Report, Parking Plan reports a single point in time weekday utilization of sixty-seven percent. Deputy Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes. And thank you for clarifying the motion. That's very helpful. Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Rigab?
Aye.
And Chair Batazzo?
Nay.
Motion passes three one.
Thank you. That concludes the motions proposed by Commissioners to make changes to the actual elements of the comprehensive plan, at least as submitted in advance of the meeting. Before we move on to findings, do any other Commissioners want to take up any changes or business regarding changes, especially in response to public comment before we take up findings? Vice Chair Murphy?
I don't want to take up any specific proposed changes. I did want to comment a couple of things in general on the matrix that was created, if this is the appropriate time.
I was thinking. Well, why don't you go ahead? And we'll see where to fit, fit it in.
Yeah. So the matrix says many of these things are policy choices. But most of them were not really policy choices, except in the broadest sense, if we were the state legislature, for example. And so I'm a little bit concerned about that presentation by the staff as being a policy choice for us. The city does not have a policy choice to ignore or not implement the legislative requirements of the middle housing bill and the other GMA reforms. And many of these comments, proposals that were presented by citizens who feel strongly about the single-family nature of the island and simply are not consistent with the various pieces of legislation. And to be insisting on preserving pure, single-family neighborhoods or promoting a goal along those lines is not consistent with the controlling legislation and frankly is not helpful to what we're doing. We can acknowledge that those people believe sincerely that that's what they would like to retain for the island, but we can make policy that is inconsistent with the law.
Commissioner Cuse?
Yeah, I just want to concur with Vice Chair Murphy's statement. I really appreciate that staff took time to respond to Commissioners' feedback. I would love to have a little blue ribbon commission, like a staff PC joint session on, on how we can do this in the future, that will be most effective because I, well, I understand the idea that it's a policy choice and that and I also understand what Vice Chair Murphy is saying, that it's not a choice, it's the law. I think what I was looking for was really two columns there. One that said, is this editorial or is it policy-related? And then one that said, what are the relevant policies? And, and then maybe even a third one that said this is clear-cut, you know, versus this is open to interpretation. Because the other thing that I struggled with is some of the items that were labeled wordsmithing, I think actually could affect the interpretation of the policy or, or how staff might interpret what the direction and you know, intent is really important and people can I guess discern all kinds of intent from similar statements if they're vague. So I think, I think sometimes wordsmithing is is policy-related because it captures intent and sometimes it is not. So, yeah, to close, blue ribbon commission to figure out a great comment table for next time and kudos to staff and thank you very much for responding to our request for the table.
Commissioner Rigab?
I mean, so are we, I mean, there are, I think, I agree, some of the things that are policy choice are tied to those requirements, I guess, not mandates, requirements. But there were some policy choices that we, as a commission, made. One, one example that comes to mind is small-scale retail development or studying that, so I mean, that may perhaps we articulate, you know, I, I agree, most of what, the majority of the changes we made were driven by those requirements, but there were some, and I think that was a theme in the public comment, is in some cases we leaned beyond those. I mean, we've got a lot of comments saying, you know, within the law or according to, you know, the GMA only, so I, I'd be reluctant to just write everything off that was marked by staff as a policy choice as something that's required by law. I, I don't, I, I don't want to tread, I think I'm treading, I want to tread lightly here and not, you know, give the impropriety of, or the, 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 anyway. Yeah, just, there, I think there were some policy choices that in the, in the view of, of our public commenters that were, you know, what, whether it was or was viewed as beyond what was required by those state laws.
We are on the topic of the public comment matrix, if you will. I feel like all three Commissioners pointed to some issues with that matrix. Adam and Allison, I believe that the tool, I'm going to regard it, I guess I'm regarding that as a tool, the planning commission requested of you and also requested that staff make some initial recommendations. Um, I suppose as a Commissioner, I wasn't intending to refer that tool to council for use necessarily. It was a more of a tool to be used between staff and the commission to frame what we just did regarding motions to make changes. And also what we're about to do, which is make some findings. Um, or support that, but I wasn't, I, I, I certainly hadn't intended that you refer that product forward necessarily. Uh, what did you think you guys were going to do with it? Like, I'd like some clarity from staff about what you're going to do with the comment matrix.
Sure. So the, by including it in the uh, planning commission bill, uh, then it is entered in to the record, right? And so the council, um, if they wanted to see that, they could refer to the planning commission bill. Um, so that, the comment matrix, so this kind of live within the planning this year.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, I think what it says to me is that Commissioner Cuse's point about, hey, next time around, let's take some time to really fill this out in a manner that we can all feel is a consistent, has a voice, has responses that make sense that the commission can either vote on or align around or whatever, uh, similar to also what Commissioner Murphy was pointing to, um, like some clarity around a statement, a policy choice. Uh, doesn't necessarily clarify who's making the policy choice. Um, and so uh, I, I agree that in the future, uh, we probably want to get a lot tighter about um, the tools that we create and use to support each other in uh, making some of these changes and findings. Um, I think in the state that it's in, I don't love it. I don't, I don't even like some of the comments, but um, I think it would take quite a bit of effort for us to revise line by line, um, to make changes at this point. And so I think I suppose it might be a decent time for me to propose, like, I think this is a good transition piece to maybe make some findings. I'd like to propose a finding. Actually, for the record, and I did send it to Adam Zach, I'm wondering if you'd be willing to put that finding up on the screen and I can read it. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to propose a finding in our findings report. Um, my finding is that a number of public comments expressed opposition to several planning commission driven changes included in the new draft of the comprehensive plan. The planning commission took up several amendments to the draft in response to public comment, but not, did not elect to make all changes recommended by the public. We encourage city council to review public comments during their consideration of the draft plan.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, I think I proposed this motion because I suspected we were going to get to a place where we were going to need to signal to council that comments were made that we didn't address. And I wanted to make sure that we actually acknowledge that, uh, that comments were made that we didn't address. Um, and that we are allowing council, uh, the space to take on some of those policy discussions, uh, as as is necessary for their role. Uh, Commissioner Cuse?
Uh, I would like to offer a friendly amendment. In the first sentence where it says, a number of public comments expressed opposition to several planning commission driven changes included in the new draft of the comprehensive plan, um, I would like, I would prefer, I'll go for it either way, but I would prefer if that's said to several state mandated or planning commission driven changes, and I don't care what order those are in, if you want to lead with planning commission or state man, state required. I just want to add state, state required in there somewhere because there, the public comments were both, right? I, I, I agree with um, Commissioner Ragab that we did make some policy recommendations, but there were also, and there was public opposition to both the policy recommendations we made and the state required ones.
What if we modified it to read opposition to strike the word several? Insert state mandated and planning commission driven changes. It's just addressing many of the changes. Is that consistent with your amendment?
I would use or instead of and to make a distinction. Thank you. Yes, I agree with that.
Right, I'll accept that. Um, Vice Chair Murphy?
Um, yeah, I think that solves one of my main concerns because as we observed, um, I think the week before last, there were a great many comments, or not a great many, there were a few comments characterizing what was happening as being the planning commission was driving all these changes. And in fact, as we observed then, I observed in Commissioner Cuse and others observed that that was a mischaracterization of how this was A, put together and B, what the reality was. So I think that helps um, mitigate that. Yeah, I, I, I think that's solves the problem.
Thank you. Commissioner Ragab?
And I think we're kicking the can up to the state. Um, I under, yeah, I understand there was opposition to that, but let, let's own this draft, right? I don't know. I mean, if not, then let's, I don't know, it, it seems like, I mean, we received comments about, we also received comments about the process. You know, that's, I, 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 I don't know, it just, I, I think planning commission driven policies. I, I'd feel more comfortable with it if we said planning commission or state mandated. Planning commission policies, some of which are driven, you know, like, let's put us, put our name first. Um, and then, I don't, I don't know. I guess we don't, we, we should, we, we ought not to get into the specifics, right? Um, I think the, that matrix makes it much easier for council to look at them than just, you know, than like a 71-page PDF, so I think that's helpful. I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm just rambling at this point.
Are you making a friendly amendment or are you complete?
Am I done? Um, I'll make a friendly amendment to say a number of public comments expressed opposition to planning commission driven policies, some of which were state mandated.
I don't think I'm going to accept that.
Okay, peace.
Okay. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Commissioner Ragab, is that a new hand? Okay. Actually, could you put that back on the screen so I could read it for the vote, please? Since we changed it and I didn't write it down. Thank you. The motion on the table is to make a finding that a number of public comments expressed opposition to state mandated or planning commission driven changes included in the new draft of the comprehensive plan. The planning commission took up several amendments to the draft in response to, in response to public comment, but did not elect to make all changes recommended by the public. We encourage city council to review public comments during their consideration of the draft plan. Deputy City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Chair, for purposes of clarification, um, and based on your original motion, I put at the beginning of that, um, a motion was made by Batazo, seconded by Cuse to propose a finding that quote, and then your statement.
That's correct.
Thank you. Vice Chair Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Ragab?
Abstaining.
Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
And Chair Batazoo?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes three.
Commissioner Rag, oh. Commissioner Cuse?
Thank you for recognizing me, Chair. Um, there was one other um, public comment that I was debating bringing up, but I just want to raise it to see if others are interested in discussing. It is potentially wordsmithing, but potentially also uh, meaningful to policy and that's in the transportation element, um, four, 10. There was some discussion about needing to articulate the need of off-street parking. Um, and I'm wondering if there isn't uh, an, an addition of ADA in that policy. Uh, uh, or if that is just intuitively obvious to our planners and we don't need to mention it.
Can you be more specific about either what comment you're referring to?
I'm referring to um, public comment, there's three of them that basically say the same thing. It's public comment 2.2, 3.2 and 8.
Is it under?
And all through, it's under transportation. And it is under goal 4.10.
Um, you started your comment by saying, do we need to discuss? Um, are you making us, are you requesting discussion around that comment?
I am requesting a, I guess a thumbs up, thumbs down on whether there is appetite to discuss that topic and potentially wordsmith that item a little bit. Because I wasn't sure how the motion should read, so I did not propose a motion. Um, and, and I also kind of had a question for staff if the ADA issue is wholly covered elsewhere and it's unnecessary to make that point here.
Okay, Commissioner Ragab, you put your hand down. Are you, wait, were you going to comment about this particular issue or did you want to bring up something different?
Uh, may I be, yeah, may I be recognized?
You, I'm recognizing you.
Uh, we did, looking through our minutes from last week, um, we did make a finding relating to this. Um, I believe that I proposed. Um, I'm, I'm happy to read it if, if desired. Maybe that addresses the comment, I'm, I'm not sure, but we did, we did touch on something in our, I guess now working document.
Does staff mind pulling up four, 10, just so we can see what we did with that? I apologize if I did not.
So, for, this is transportation element, policy 4.10, uh, this year.
All right, thank you for refreshing my memory. I withdraw my comment. Thanks, Adam. Thanks, Commissioner Ragab.
Okay.
Lot of material, lot of material this time.
There is, right?
Just wanted to make sure that one was covered.
Where am I? What am I doing here? Oh, what we're doing is we're finalizing our recommendations and findings so that we can forward that to the council after the end of today's meeting. That said, Commissioner Ragab, you have made, you've proposed a couple of findings. Shall we address those?
Uh, I, I hope I can find a second for them. Yes, I have two left and then I'm done. All right, housing element, um, housing element number one, I move that we add to our findings. Six public comments were received on goal 25H. Um, two of those mentioned, it could be used as a way around G-FAR permeable surface, height floor limits, facade height, parking requirements and property line offset requirements among others. Um, looking for a second to discuss.
I, I want to second this just to acknowledge the public comment, um, and have a brief discussion.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
Um, the reason I'm bringing this forward is, I think, you know, I don't think this was the intent of goal 25H. Um, but it was, and I didn't see this until it was mentioned to me by a Mercer Islander at our open house. Um, but as worded, this goal could be, you know, if it, G-FAR permeable surface, all of these residential design standards that were, apparently a lot of effort was put in 2017. Many of those, if not all of them, are not safety related, so this could be used as a way to just move around those. So I wanted to flag that, that this, you know, whether someone wants to do this or wants to avoid this, um, this is a potential implication of goal 25H and thank the public for catching that for us.
Commissioner Cuse?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I, I believe we already discussed this one. Um, and I don't know that we formalized it as a policy or not, so I'll ask staffer perhaps, Commissioner Ragab, um, if we, because I, I, I noted in several of the staff responses to these comments, there were, and I, I, I grouped a lot of them that, that had kind of similar themes to them. Um, that the reason that we have to revisit the development standards or is it, it's called out, it's called for in this, it's mandated, it's required by the state. And, and staff has stated that this issue, this concern is going to be taken up in the revision of the development code. So I, I feel like we have acknowledged the issue and, and that we have said, here is the place where we will resolve that. So I, I think it was a fair public comment, um, and I wanted to acknowledge the public comment. Um, but I do think we already have a solution to that and I don't think we need a finding.
Vice Chair Murphy, anything to add?
No, I agree with the Commissioner Cuse.
If there. Commissioner Ragab, final thoughts?
Just, just to clarify, 25H, this was one that we as the planning commission added at, you know, to the housing work group recommended section, right? This didn't come from the housing work group, right? Does anyone recall?
Would, would it be helpful for me to give a little background here?
Yes, please.
So, yeah, first let me, let me share my, share 25H. I think that might be helpful to see what that policy says. Um, it, just, this will also maybe jog some memories here. So policy 2.5 is talking about um, some of the approaches that we'll use to encourage construction of new affordable housing. One of those proposed strategies is relief from development One of those proposed strategies is relief from development code provisions that do not affect health or safety requirements. So that's the, that's the policy that, uh, the planning commission arrived at. That was one of the policies that was added by the planning commission following the housing work groups, uh, work during the planning commission's review. Um, but the, the comment in the matrix, the staff comment was basically that as, as we implement this policy, we would, we would make the decisions. The city could make those decisions about which development code provisions it may, it, it may grant some waiver to. Typically, that would be something like a reduced setback or, um, you know, for currently for, um, accessory dwelling units, we allow some additional gross floor area, um, for those accessory dwelling units. So it could be something like that. But that were really, those decisions would be made by the planning commission and the city council ultimately at the time that we implement the policy. So hopefully that helps kind of get, get us all square on, on where we're at with that.
Commissioner Cuse?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the housing work group is a very fast process. We had three one-hour meetings and members of the housing work group did not add a lot of text to what staff had already provided. And so I think it was good for the planning commission to take a look and add a few minor things here or there that are, you know, policy-ish that help interpret how we want to handle handle these issues in the code. So ju- just to say, you know, even though something was received from the housing work group, it's, it's, it's not like we spent the hours that this group spends debating and discussing the nuances. It's a, it was a very quick process.
There are, there's no further discussion. The motion on the table is to add to findings. Six public comments were received on goal two point five H. Two of those mentioned could be used as a way around G far permeable surface, height floor limits, facade height, parking requirements, and property line offset requirements, among others. Deputy City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Excuse me. Thank you. Chair Batazo?
Nay.
Commissioner Rigob?
Aye.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Nay.
And Commissioner Cuse?
Nay.
Motion fails three one.
Commissioner Rigob?
All right, last one, and you don't have to hear me, uh, proposing stuff. Um, land use, number one. Um, I moved to add to our findings that there were four public email comments calling for a vision statement referring to single-family homes and consistent with the city's vision statement, and two additional comments with the same theme. Nine commenters at the open house also called for a similar preamble with similar themes to the housing element.
I have a motion to add a finding. Is there a second? Uh, I'll second for the purpose of debate, Commissioner Rigob.
Uh, I think the reason I thought of bringing this up is, you know, this is something as a commission, we didn't really, I, I, at least from my point of view, I don't think we thought about this. Um, you know, finding city's vision statement tying this, you know, eight to 10-year document to it. In addition, I thought it was also important because this spans two different mediums through which we receive public comment. Um, some of it, you know, at the open house, people are talking about a preamble and then in our written email comments. So I think it's, I think it's important. It's, it's maybe not the easiest to pull out. So I thought this was another one that we ought to, you know, wave a big flag to city council on and say, hey, there's some, there's some talk about aligning this with the vision statement, maybe giving a, you know, because these goals are tough to read. I mean, I find them tough to read, and I've been doing this for a year. Um, so if I'm just skimming the document, I think it's helpful to see. Uh, anyway, so that, that's what it is. It spans two different mediums of public comment, and it was a recurring theme between them, and it's something that I don't think we even thought of as a commission.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, thi- this follows, uh, well, first of all, I think the purpose of findings is to maybe call attention to things that we want the council to focus on or to look at. But this one in particular falls into the category that I spoke to earlier of something that is really pushing back on the various pieces of legislation that we are obligated to apply and utilize. And the notion of promoting and preserving single-family only neighborhoods is really inconsistent with that legislation, and I don't think it's worthy of calling attention to the council. Uh, that that's something that they should be looking at incorporating into the comp plan.
Commissioner Cuse?
I just wanted to concur with Vice Chair Murphy, um, just having sat on the housing work group. Council is keenly aware of this topic, keenly aware of the desire, um, for some in our community to put up some resistance to the state requirements. And, and I think they're already aware of it. I don't think it's something we need to call it as a finding.
Um, I suppose just to lend my voice to the discussion. Uh, I, while I appreciate the comment and the sentiment, I also recognize, man, these cop plan revision, all this cop plan stuff is hard and complicated because there are so many places we have to look and tie things together. And so I recognize that it feel, if it feels like a burden to the public, which based on public comment, at least some of them, it feels like it. Um, it's because it's hard stuff, uh, and I think we do our best to simplify. My understanding, based on watching and reading, including consistent reference to the scope of work defined by council itself, did not necessarily take up vision statement revisions. And I, and while it was recognized that the public felt like that was a, as something to address, uh, it, it was not recognized as something that would actually support this cop plan revision, and the council chose not to take it up as part of the scope of work. So, and comment, are there any final words before we vote? Seeing none, uh, the motion on the table is to add a finding that there were four public comment, four public email comments calling for a vision statement referring to single-family homes and consistent with the city's vision statement, and two additional comments with the same theme. Nine commenters at the open house also called for similar preamble with similar themes to the housing element. Deputy City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chair Batazo?
Nay.
Commissioner Cuse?
Nay.
Commissioner Rigob?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Murphy?
Nay.
Motion fails three one.
Commissioners, uh, that concludes all of the motions that were proposed prior to this meeting. Given conversation and discussion, are, is, are there any further findings or motions to be made by commissioners? Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Rigob.
Real quick one, um, relating to verbal comments at the public hearing. Um, you know, we did have Senator Wellman express, um, you know, some concern with that we were not in person. Is there, I guess, maybe I'm just asking, like, is there a planned date for these meetings to be come back in person? I figured it showed up in her minutes. We had a, a, you know, state senator comment. But, but you ought to discuss it at least.
Hi, Allison. Hi, I'm happy to comment on that. Um, I think that's something we could revisit at this time if, if the commission desires to. Um, I think the city facilities are at a point where it is likely possible to meet in person if we want to sometimes or all of the time. I think I'd be happy to talk with commissioners about their preferences around that. Um, I mean, I know many of you have jobs, and so there's an element of, you know, if you're in person, it takes a little more planning to be there on time and all that. So that's something to consider. I know you know, the online format can just be more accessible for a lot of reasons. So you know, I think I'm happy to take temperature from people and, and see where we're at with that. And if there is interest in moving towards summer, all of the meetings being in person, that's something we could pursue starting probably this fall.
Um, is it possible for commission meetings to be hybrid? I mean, we state that they're hybrid, even though they seem all online. Is it possible?
Yeah, I mean, right now there is an option for people in the community to show up at the community center and view the meeting or make comments to you from there. Um, so that's why we call it hybrid. I think if we move to having the commissioners and/or staff in person, um, it would still be hybrid. We would still, um, be broadcasting via YouTube, and people could come make public comment either in person at the community center in front of the folks that are in person or online. And I think likewise commissioners would have the ability to join online. Um, so commissioners, obviously there's some logistical difficulties if we've got commissioners both in person and online, just in making sure we're recognizing raised hands and comments and all those kinds of things, but it is possible. We did that, um, for a little while before city hall closed. And I think we maybe had, can't quite remember, three or four meetings that were hybrid and it worked fine. I mean, it wasn't perfect, but it was fine, I would say.
Commissioner Cuse?
Yeah, as somebody who works and does have children at home, uh, and given the, uh, as well documented, um, women do more of the childcare. I won't get into that. Um, I, I think that it is important to be in front of the public, and while I appreciate it, um, and want to show due deference to, um, the honorable Wellman, um, the I think, I think it's important for us to occasionally be all in like we were at the open house. And I think opportunities like that, or maybe having a, sometimes like the King County Council will have a special meeting and they'll go out to the district, and they'll have a meeting in, in, in front of a group at Redmond Town Hall or something. Just to, just to get out and press the flesh a little more and meet people and get that sense of personal connection that folks are looking for. Um, I'd be really, really opposed to part in, part out. My experience with those meetings was that it was extremely difficult for the chair to, um, track raised hands online and in person, uh, to get order of who raised their hands. It was a bit of a mess. So I would prefer that if we do want to do, um, some connect, if we want to have provide better public service and, and by being more connected to the public, if that's a goal, and I, I don't think it's a bad goal, um, that it, it be sometimes, um, a some, like a dessert, you know, it's a sometimes treat as opposed to an all-the-time treat. Especially given the weekly nature of these meetings while we're updating the comp plan, I think it would be really untenable for a lot of working parents to make a weekly meeting. And, uh, deal with baseball and Girl Scouts and dance and all of those wonderful things the kids on the island do.
Commissioner Rigob?
I, I wasn't intending for us to make a recommendation on what we think we should do. I was just kind of saying, hey, let, let's punt this up to council and see if they have any guidance or recommendations they would like. That, that's all. That's the only reason I was bringing that up. I, I personally, it's, yeah, it's definitely easier, um, virtual.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Yeah, I, I would be reluctant to follow Adam's suggestion of punting this to council. How we manage our meetings is our business, not theirs. Um, and any more than how they do theirs is our business. Uh, so I'd be reluctant to, to ask them for guidance. For me personally, uh, given my disabilities, online is extremely beneficial. Uh, it allows me access, given my computer setup, to access documents very quickly and to be much more effective and useful as a commissioner. Uh, so I prefer the online format. I've watched a lot of council meetings where one or, one or more council members, um, is out of town, and it's a truly hybrid meeting with for whatever commissioner, council members present and, and one, two, or three not in online. And that seems to function fairly well. But I, I do think the idea of once in a while, like the idea of dessert, of having, uh, us all together, um, for, for some special type of, uh, proceeding is probably not a bad idea either. So, but I would, I would allow for the default of having a true hybrid meeting where people can participate either, um, in person or remotely. One final comment, following on, on, uh, I think Commissioner, uh, Cuse's statement. One of the main reasons why we have kept this online was for the very reason that the workload was so heavy and the number of meetings was so heavy. That was a conscious decision. Uh, and that was a major driving force, um, for that decision.
Having heard from most of the commissioners on the issue, can I just get a thumbs up, thumbs down about asking staff to circle back with commissioners, maybe in August and take individual temperature offline as to what commissioners would prefer as we head into the fall season? That is deferring this issue to, thank you. So Allison, if you want to loop back with all of us individually and take our temperature later this year?
Yeah, happy to do that. I can set up some calls before we pick up our fall meetings and make a recommendation on how to accommodate what people prefer.
Okay. Commissioner Cuse?
Uh, I believe I tabled one of the motions last time. Do we need to untable that for discussion? Because I think staff's actually responded to it in this new table.
Um, in order to take that motion off the table, we need to vote to remove it from the table and insert it for discussion. Are you proposing we do that?
I, I guess it's a process question, and maybe the city clerk can answer. If we put something on the table and we are about to declare, here are our findings, here are the recommendations to council, does that then, um, mean that thing stays on the table forever? And it doesn't get revisited again? Um, because I want to be fair to the person who proposed the motion, um, and untable it if this is the last shot at discussion, discussing it.
Commissioner Rigob?
Um, I believe the staff response pointed us in the direction, and I spoke with a, you know, professional in this area, and they said that, that's, that's the convention. that we've pointed to where a reference is. So I'm at peace with it staying at the table or just disappearing. I feel no need to bring it up because, because of staff's response.
Commissioner Cuse, Commissioner Ragab does not feel the need to revive his motion on the table. Did you want to do anything with it?
I'm happy to leave it on the table then.
If there are no further motions around findings. Allison and Adam Zach, I think we're in a place where we want to make a motion to refer the draft comprehensive plan. I'll frame that motion in just a second. Is there something that you need to do or recommend doing about kind of summarizing or presenting something to us?
No, I think in the last two years of working on this project, I have summarized many things. Think we're ready for a motion, yeah.
In that case, I'd like to make a motion to refer the draft comprehensive plan as amended by planning commission this evening to city council for its review.
Second.
Moved and seconded discussion. Vice Chair Murphy?
Should we be recommending approval or that they adopt the updated comp plan? Adam Zach is nodding his head.
The, the staff recommended motion included the, it was a motion to recommend adoption. So that, that was the staff recommended version.
Okay. Do we want to actually put the staff recommended version of the motion up? So that I can point to it and say, let's do that. I'm gonna, let's do that one. I think Chair, Vice Chair Murphy is trying to recommend that.
Yes.
I thought that's what we were doing.
I didn't use the word adoption in my statement, so let me clarify for Deputy City Clerk. The motion on the table is to recommend adoption of the updated comprehensive plan as amended to the city council. It was seconded by Commissioner Cuse. If no further discussion. Deputy City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Thank you. Chair Batazzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
Chair, Vice Chair Murphy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ragab?
Abstain.
Motion passes three zero one.
Commissioner Ragab?
I, I wish the, I wish to state the reason for my dissenting vote.
Did you dissent or abstain?
Abstaining vote, apologies. There are factual errors in this document, but I respect the commission's vote on it.
Thank you. Adam Zach? You had your hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is, this is a pretty big milestone for this project, and we've been working on this. With, you've been working on this for two years now, and it's a, it's a pretty cool thing that we got to this point. I just was, as you were voting on the motion, reflecting on the thousands of pages of planning commission bills and studies that have gone forward, and I think it's, it's a really it, it's. You, you should be really proud of the work that you've done here on this plan, and I think you, you arrived at a really great document to bring forward to the council. And it's been, it's been my pleasure working with you through this process and I, I think it's, we've ended up with a really good plan coming out of it. So I just wanted to give a tip of the hat for the work.
Thank you. Commissioner Cuse?
I wanted to support kind of a mutual admiration society feeling here. This was a lot of work. It was a lot of work, and I feel like the city staff, I wish there were more of you. I, I think we kept you up very late a number of times, and I think part of that was us kind of trying to figure out our process. And so I want to thank staff. I also want to thank our new Chair Batazzo. I think you've in this first meeting where you're fully chairing, I think you've done an exemplary job. I really appreciate the way you ran this meeting. And I'm excited to see more of that in the future, and I hope it will be more effective for for staff and the commission. So thank you, everyone, and I'd also like to thank my fellow commissioners. We had a lot of tough discussions and I, I appreciate the candor. I appreciate the respect shown to each other.
I think that wraps that final item of special business, and we move on to other business. Do we have a deputy director's report?
Yeah, just brief one. I did want to say thank you to Adam for all his hard work on everything related to the comp plan for the last two and a half years. I mean, a very high percentage of those thousands of pages of planning commission bills and draft elements were authored by him, and he's putting in a tremendous amount of really good work on this. So many thanks, Adam. Great job. And then, just shifting to thinking, looking forward. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we're reconvening the housing work group here very shortly. The first meeting scheduled for June twentieth. Commissioner Cuse and Chair Batazzo will be joining that group. We're going to be meeting. I think every week or two throughout second half of June and month of July. Trying to get four or six meetings in and create a draft of the code amendment we need to make to add capacity for the higher density units to meet our affordability targets. So I think that'll be another big piece of important work, and staff and the work group will be quite busy during that time period, preparing those drafts and reviewing them. And for that reason, we're going to propose canceling the planning commission meetings in June and July. So the June twenty sixth and July twenty fourth planning commission meetings will be canceled. Since you all made a decision tonight, we won't need the June meeting, and we're, we're going to cancel the July one as well. That means our next meeting will be in September. Just going to look at the date really quick. September twenty fifth, yeah. So like we said earlier, I'll be in touch with all of you individually sometime in August, early September about the desired meeting format for the fall and kind of the upcoming work plan and those sorts of things. So I guess just watch for an email here in a couple of months to touch base, and then we'll be back in the fall.
All right.
Oh, one other thing I wanted to say, sorry. So tonight's recommendation is going to be prepared, a draft will be prepared by staff, a written recommendation based on everything that was discussed tonight. The chair will sign that, and along with the drafts and the findings, all of that package will go to city council. We're planning to bring the recommendation forward to city council on July sixteenth. Chair Batazzo, you will be invited to join staff at that meeting to present the recommendation to council. We can talk more about that offline if you've got questions. Just want to make sure that was on all of your radar in case you want to tune in to watch the meeting. And from there, that will really just be the, the city council's introduction to this recommendation. They're not going to be making any decisions at that time. They'll pick it back up in September for two or three more meetings to make up amendments and review their final changes. Yeah, any questions about the rest of that process?
Are we, am I, or is the commission able to review the letter in the?
Yeah, typically the way we do that is staff draft something, the chair reviews it, and then the chair signs it.
Is anybody else on the commission request to review? Or you guys trust that'll look at it thoroughly? All right, I got some thumbs up. Mike's just nodding, yeah, my.
I'm off the hook.
Deputy City Clerk, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Our by, our bylaws changed, and it now requires a motion to cancel meetings, and so if I could get a motion to cancel the June and July regular meetings, that would be wonderful.
So moved.
The motion on the table to cancel the June and July meetings is seconded?
Second.
Great. Do we have to vote on it, or, yeah, I guess we do, huh? Right. Unless there's any discussion, Deputy City Clerk, can you call the roll on the motion?
Thank you. Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
Chair Batazzo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ragab?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Awesome. I just had a couple of final things to say tonight as we close out. I want to acknowledge our city staff partners for all the darn hard work that they've had to do with us. I want to acknowledge commissioners for all of the, this is a hard work. This is a lot of hard work. So the fact that we had the number of public commentators who are also trying to keep up with this, like, I just acknowledge everyone who has participated in this process and who's been staying up late, looking up definitions, chasing down legislation to be thorough and accurate and mindful about the policies. I also do want to take the moment to acknowledge Vice Chair Murphy, because he predominantly led a lot of the bulk of this. And I, we didn't get an opportunity at our last meeting to address that, so I wanted to just acknowledge you for your effort as chair of the past year. This body's just taken a lot of work and debated policies, and your leadership has, for the most part, gone as here. I get to take no credit because this is my first meeting. So thank you for getting us here also.
It's great for you. You get to roll in and take the glory, so.
It's the best kind, isn't it? Thanks for doing all the hard work.
Timing is everything.
Somehow it doesn't quite feel that way, but anyway. I do want to make sure we acknowledge you publicly for your work and your support. And, and everybody here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, if there is no further business, I do want to just remind folks, commissioners, that if you have any planned absences, if you could just reach out to us offline. And let staff and myself know planned absences for the fall, because our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September twenty fifth at six P M. There being no other business to come before the planning commission, the time is now eight oh three P M, and the meeting is adjourned. As a reminder to commissioners, please stay seated, or at least on screen until staff has terminated the broadcast. Thanks, everybody, and good evening.